Welcome to the month of November and another monthly Board meeting recap for Henry County Schools. I'm J.D. Harden, Executive Director of Communications and Public Relations, joined here with our Superintendent, Mary Elizabeth Davis.
Thanks for having me and thanks for joining us.
It was a great month to be in our board meetings with, you know, our five outstanding board members because this month we got to celebrate all the hard work and accomplishments of so many students, teachers, and really employees from across the system as we celebrated on 11/11, an 11-point increase on our College and Career Ready Performance Index, otherwise known as CCRPI.
It was so exciting. Our Board of Education articulated the great pride they have in our schools, in our employees, and the excitement that they shared for our students who have demonstrated learning at the highest levels possible. Not only were we able to celebrate an 11-point increase in our district's CCRPI score, we also were able to celebrate that each level, elementary, middle, and high, are all performing above the state average here in Henry County schools. We were able to see that as a district, we have not only been on this ambitious pursuit of being the fastest improving and the highest achieving, but we went from performing near the bottom of our Griffin and Metro regions to now near the top. It was an exciting celebration of great learning and an opportunity to demonstrate to our community just how proud we are in our schools.
Double-digit increases. Schools that were moving their star climate rating up into the five-star, the highest that you can achieve. We also, you know, this really comes on the heels of some other precursors that you should, we could probably reference, the Georgia milestones, kind of gave us an indication that we might be moving in this direction. Of course, when the scores came out, again, so much to celebrate. Melissa Morse, our Chief Learning Performance Officer, had the awesome opportunity to share this in front of our board, a very robust presentation about all the numbers, made a lot of good data, and we've got an opportunity to hear a little bit about her presentation right here.
Each month as we discuss the work of our district, we're reminded that our board has articulated a compass, first through the core beliefs and commitments, and then with that plan of action that brought those core beliefs and commitments to life, communicating clear ideas for how they can be a reality for our community. In order to know if we're making that progress towards these goals, we have to look to the accountability system that the Georgia DOE provides for all districts and schools in the state of Georgia, the CCRPI. It's designed to provide a comprehensive model that allows comparisons of performance across school districts in Georgia and to comply with federal requirements for an accountability system. When we look at our overall district score for the 2019 index, Henry County schools earned a 77.3. You can see that this is an 11.3-point increase from our index score last year of a 66. I'm proud that the leadership of this Board of Education, setting the beliefs and commitments to student learning, then with a clarity of purpose articulated in the plan of action, led to the kind of increases that we see here. While overall we increased by 11.3, you can see that we showed increases at every level as well. 15.6-point increase in elementary school, an 8.6-point increase in middle, and a 7.6-point increase in high school. This growth means that more students have learned at higher levels, that more students are showing mastery of the standards, that more students have had an opportunity that enhances their readiness for the next level, that more students grew in their knowledge and skills. So the CCRPI provides us a number, but we always have to remember the faces of our students that are behind these numbers. So here in yellow is our 2018 performance, and next to it is our 2019 performance in purple. When we look at our rate of growth, in comparison to the rate of growth of the state, not only was our growth incredible, it was in comparison to the rest of the state, which as a whole showed a decline in performance, except in high school where they did have an increase of 1.8 points. This is worth noting because sometimes when you experience growth, if the state is also experiencing the same kind of growth, it might just mean that it's an evening out of a trend of some sort. But we are outpacing the growth of the state, and this means that we're closing the gap in our performance in comparison. In 2018, you can see that only three districts had lower performance than us, and you can see how wide the gap was between the top-performing districts and Henry County. Now, only five districts have performance higher than ours, and you can see that the gap between those five districts and our own is closing. In one year, we went from having a gap of 21.3 points from the top-performing district to only a 12.2-point gap. And I want you to look at the growth rate in comparison. Our 11.3-point gain is the only gain in this comparison group that is positive double digits. Our goal of being the fastest improving and highest achieving district in the metro is ambitious, and while we're not yet the highest achieving, we are the fastest improving. This is a component of the CCRPI where we showed tremendous improvement at every level. In elementary school, we went from earning 30.3 points for closing gaps. Very generally, this meant that overall we were really only meeting about a third of our student target groups, to a score of 100. Middle and high school also saw significant jumps, as you can see from that purple bar. Our increases are impressive, again, also in the face of the state taking a significant drop in performance on closing gaps in elementary and middle. In 2018, our elementary score was a 30.3, and it was represented here by these flags. In 2019, these are our flags that represent 100 points. We still have a few red flags we have to address, but overall, we got 100 because of nine flags we have with stars that earned us those extra points in the calculation. It's especially exciting to see those stars in elementary school, that pivotal foundational time, and I think it's really worth noting that we have all green flags, three of which indicate higher-than-six-percent growth for our students with disabilities. In middle school, you can see our flags in 2018 and then in 2019. Seeing that for ELA, an area where we've really had a focus for the last year, the fact that it went from almost all red to green is really exciting. And lastly, in high school, you can see our flags from 2018 in comparison to those for 2019. This shows great progress for closing gaps in our high school classrooms. We're making progress with our students with disabilities in high school, and like elementary, it's great to see our economically disadvantaged students showing remarkable gains. The readiness component of the CCRPI takes indicators of a student's readiness to go on to the next level, or for our students who are graduating, it actually is are they ready for college and career based on a set of indicators. Unlike some of the other components of the CCRPI where our performance was considerably lower last year in comparison to the state, in readiness, we've stayed close to pace with the state. You'll remember from Dr. Madden's previous board presentations that a key to a strong climate is connectivity. Our goal to be known for connectivity and belief in our students, when it's realized, we hope that everyone is going to be able to see growth in their climate rating, and that when they do, it's going to reflect that a Henry County classroom is the best place to learn. We had 10 schools increase their climate star rating from the 18 to 19 school years. Bethlehem, Mount Carmel, Ola Elementary, Smith Barnes, Tussahaw, Wesley Lakes, Luella Middle, Hampton High School, and Stockbridge High School went from a three to a four-star rating. And Ola High School went from a three-star to a five-star rating in just one year. Thirty-two of our schools earn a four-star rating, and six of our schools earned a five-star rating. Hickory Flat, Luella Elementary, Rock Spring, Dutchtown Middle, Ola High School that I mentioned for you before, and then Union Grove High School. This review of our 19 CCRPI score and the components that comprise it, again, celebrates unbelievable growth and a remarkable effort on the part of our teachers, our leaders, and the students who are working hard every single day. This doesn't just happen, though, and this kind of growth truly takes intentional leadership on the part of our Board of Education. And this path that you have us on, as we continue to be the highest-achieving school district in the metro Atlanta area, is exciting. In Henry's Plan of Action that you, our board, passed as policy B A B, you set us up for sustainable success that won't just be a moment in time, but instead is going to guide our trajectory of student learning moving forward.
Of course, these metrics are something worth celebrating, and we are so proud of the hard work of our employees, our school leaders, our teachers, and our support personnel. But we also know that it takes a Board of Education to have a unified and clarified vision for this school system, and they have done so through their establishment of the core beliefs and commitments, a plan of action, and strategic priorities that will now transition into a strategic plan. But let's take a listen to hear about all of the great work of our Board of Education.
There are four components that leads a school system into becoming a high-performing school system. You have given us the core belief and commitments, the strategic priorities, and Henry's Plan of Action, which have led the way to the formation of this long-range strategic planning process. It is clearly evident that you know and believe a high-performing school system starts with a high-performing Board of Education. In August, we took on the task of evaluating potential strategic partners to facilitate this process. In September, in alignment with your purchasing policy, D J E, three potential partners were interviewed and a rubric was used to score their ability to facilitate this process. In October, Greenway Strategy Group was selected as our strategic partner, and soon after the process began. This work is scheduled to conclude in spring. We are currently in Phase One. Superintendent Davis would now give a more detailed description of Phase One and also give you a preview into the next three phases. Superintendent Davis?
Thank you, Dr. Knowlton, and members of the board. Dr. Knowlton and I will hand a baton back and forth as we continue through this journey of a strategic plan. We are in the middle of our Phase One, and this Phase One started with a collection of all of our performance data points on all types of metrics, as well as all of the entry-phase analytics that were developed during my first three months on the job, along with all of the work that has been led through our performance accountability, community conversations. All those pieces of data have been provided to our strategic partner and sort of served to form as the foundation of how we will proceed from here. This will take us into December where we will transition into Phase Two. In Phase Two, the environmental scan of data points alongside our survey information will be coded and unified to develop strategic themes. We could have five strategic themes, maybe 10, maybe 15. It'll all depend on the survey voice as well as all of the performance data. As we head into January and February, those strategic themes will serve as the base for all of the community conversations that we have. Those community conversations will include the superintendent's advisories, it will include school councils, it will include faculty meetings, and it will include actual community town hall-style settings. In February, our board will review those themes, they will review the performance metrics, and in March will adopt the strategic themes and the metrics that will serve as the foundation for our strategic theme. Once we get to March, that heads us really into Phase Three, and that is to then follow strategic themes and performance priorities with strategic initiatives. We'll round out the spring by having a comprehensive strategic plan in place that will set in motion how we build a budget and how we develop ongoing strategic priorities from there.
With so much, you know, excitement and so much energy really being built around the performance of our students, of course, our teachers, and of course, this whole district, thanks to the support of our Board of Education, we're just going to keep this momentum going. There's no reason to stop it now, so we know that students are working hard each and every day in the classroom to show that the results they achieved this past year will continue for years and years to come until we get all the way to the very top, and not only for our own personal goals, but of course, to show that we are the fastest improving and highest achieving district in the metro Atlanta area. Of course, our community voice is paramount to everything that we do. That's why we bring you these opportunities to hear about the work of the board, but we also invite you at various times throughout the year to be able to weigh in, and of course, there is a place on our website that allows you to do that, and we'll be open at various stages throughout the year. And one of those surveys that, in addition to Community Voice Survey, we also have the state, the Georgia Department of Education, they have several surveys that they need your feedback on, and it really speaks to the work of our school system. So please be on the lookout for that and help us out when those opportunities come up. Now, moving along from there, we did have the opportunity to hear from two of our chiefs, a cross-divisional report, if you will, about student safety and student well-being, our health. There was a connectivity piece about the work that's ongoing to really reach out and connect with our students on the matters that are most important, and one of those is the safety and well-being of all of our students.
Yeah, it really actually started with a conversation that Mrs. Holly Cobb initiated last month. Vice Chair Holly Cobb expressed an interest in really making sure that this national epidemic affecting today's youth, known as vaping, be really a focus of our conversation so that we are informing our parents, our families, and our teachers on how to be on the lookout and how to talk with their child and their student about the harmful effects and the dangers of vaping. And so this month, we've been able to initiate our launch of something a little bit more comprehensive for families to have better information about the harmful and dangerous effects of vaping, and I think the leadership of our board, as aligned with their core belief about every environment being supportive, safe, and secure, continues to resonate in our board discussion. It also was a conversation about school security and the need for our continuous improvement in ensuring that our schools are safe and secure for all of our community members when they're on our campus.
Our board members had a lot to weigh in on with this particular topic, and let's hear from them.
Board, because you believe positive and healthy school climates and student connectivity are the foundations of a high-quality learning environment and create the conditions for effective teaching and learning to occur, you felt it was important to have core belief number three. You believe that all learning environments should be supportive, safe, and secure, and all schools will be supportive, safe, and secure.
Board members, in August, I shared with you an update on safety and security. This board's core commitments, plan of action, and allocation of resources has resulted in investment in preventative measures to mitigate risks that include, as April alluded to, our SROs in our schools, middle and high schools, a visitor check-in and check-out system, single point of entry, and doors that are locked during the school instructional day, and pilots that include a campus response system that's now active in three schools, and a buzzer and camera system at our entryway at McDonough Middle School and McDonough High School. We will continue to evaluate our pilots as we look to scale measures district-wide to meet our Henry County Schools' core commitments of a safe and secure learning environment. A safe and secure learning environment is just one way we are continually improving connectivity in our district.
I appreciate just how you guys have taken our concerns about our students and just run with it, and I'm amazed at what you've already been able to put in place for just the total well-being of our students, but especially concerning the vaping issue that we all know is just an epidemic in our entire country, not just here.
I just want to say, I appreciate the partnership that the board has, or the school system has with the SROs. It's very important that we continue that partnership. And I also want to indicate how important it is to be safe and secure in all of our schools for our children, and as well as feel safe and secure at the athletic events.
Thanks to you all and to Dr. Davis for really taking this so seriously and moving forward, and I just appreciate the role of all of the leadership in our SROs in keeping our students safe every day because it is a big task, and I just thank you so much for the intentionality that goes into it.
Thank you for the information. It's nice to see that our schools have received so much, such as the lock the doors at your entry points, and having to show a badge when you check out a child. I mean, because I don't know everybody, and how do I know who you say you are unless you have some type of ID? Unlike Ms. Edwards, all the schools that I've been to, I've had police officers and seen them at our schools, especially Locust Grove. We even had SRO when our girls, let me slide this in here real quick, won their third state championship, and so I don't know if it was because of the rowdy parents or board members that were there, but we've had SROs for all the schools that I've been at, and Henry County's, the police officers too. So I thank them very much for keeping us all safe and being diligent in making sure everybody's where they're supposed to be.
Mr. Chair, you know, the role of a public educator today has tremendous responsibility well beyond the academic needs of children, and safety, security, connectivity, and wellness are now ranking far at the top. I want to thank each one of the board members for the continued conviction they have around continuous improvement in the field of safety and security as well as wellness. I think that the conversation today reveals to our public just how seriously the board takes the safety and security of our youth, and we are proud of our partnership in this community with the Sheriff's Department, along with our emergency management officials, and we recognize that it does take a full community in order to be on watch for our youth. We are also thrilled to say that our students are among the best there are in this great state, and we have such amazing football teams that we have so many great games that attract so many participants that we also know that we have to continue to improve as we consider what other private events and large college events do when they play host to so many interested fans. And so because of this board's commitment to student wellness and school security, we will continue to get better, and we will continue to value and work through enhancing our partnerships across the entire community. That concludes, Mr. Chair, what I have to say.
We rounded out the informational portion or section of our agenda in the study session with an update on the comprehensive policy review from Dr. Knowlton.
That's right. Our Board of Education has launched this comprehensive policy review. We have 170 policies that govern and stabilize this organization, and we have partnered with GSBA in order to do a comprehensive review. What you'll see out available for public review are actually 20 of those 170 policies. The Board of Education is taking different sections of the policy book and going through the review process. Now, you'll see about half of those are actually recommended to be retained, but there are about eight that are recommended to be repealed, and then the remaining are recommended with some revision. We welcome your review and your feedback through our website. The board will take action on those policies at the December board meeting where we'll go through the next round and the next section of the policy book.
So moving from there, we went into our business item, a portion of the agenda, and those items really also transfer over to the evening business session where the board takes action. So let's spend a little bit of time on that because that really was a package of some really, you know, substantial news for our school system.
That's right.
One of those being that we now are on the cusp of welcoming the very first Boys and Girls Clubs into Henry County, thanks to a very strong collaborative partnership with the Board of Commissioners, the City of McDonough, and the School Board, you know, the Henry County Board of Education. And last night, they took official action to cement that partnership, and we're moving forward full steam ahead.
That's right. The Board of Education will be leasing a portion of the Henry County Middle facility, specifically the gym and the classrooms attached to that gym, and that will serve as the host site to the first-ever Boys and Girls Club that is being brought to this community by the collaboration of the Board of Commissioners, the City of McDonough, and the Henry County Board of Education. But what was most remarkable was seeing all three entities in the room at the same time. I do believe that we were the envy of communities across this country who would just welcome this moment where these three governing bodies would come together on behalf of today's youth and figure out ways to serve more and more pervasively throughout the community. It really was a remarkable moment. Our Board of Education did approve with a 5-0 vote the lease of that facility for the Boys and Girls Club, and it will be available starting in January.
This really started with some, you know, ground-level conversations with Commissioner Dee Clemens of District Two and our board chair, Josh Hinton, and also from District Two. The two of them started the ball rolling, and it's just really now culminated with, you know, this awesome opportunity for all of our students across the district. Let's hear a little bit from Commissioner Clemens, who was also at our board meeting last night, to provide her thanks to the board.
And I hate that I'm standing alone, but I'm standing alone because I want to thank you. I want to thank you for your support, for your hard work, for your due diligence that you did to make this happen, to come on board and to be a partner with the county and the City of McDonough, and to the City of McDonough and to the Board of Commissioners. This took a lot of effort from not only, you know, an advocate for children and Boys and Girls Club in our communities, but it took a big step for our boards to come together to put together a plan to support this financially. Had it not been for our county seat and my colleagues, we could not have done this and kicked this off, so I want to thank you for that. I thank Mr. Philip Bryant for taking the time to look at Henry County and realizing that 10 years ago, we were 130,000 members, and now we're 230,000 members, that one in every five of us that's here tonight will be over 65 in the next 10 years. And so we have to be concerned about the youth in our community. What does that look like? What does Henry County look like? Chair Wood and I was just talking. What does Henry County look like in 2030? What does Henry County look like in 2050? So it's going to take our judges, it's going to take the full community to come together to make sure that we are investing in our youth. These school bus drivers, I hate that it is tonight, I just want to say I would be remiss if I didn't say that whatever we can do to make sure that we work together as a community, we have to do that, and everybody's important. So I just want to take the time to say thank you, and I just want to share something that helped me to move when we talk about working together. It's a quote by Henry Ford, and it says, "Coming together is a beginning. Staying together is progress, but working together is success." And Henry Ford is known for making the Ford car, but he's most well-known for the assembly line, and that's what we have tonight. The assembly line is making sure that we get a Boys and Girls Club, so I thank you for that.
This has been a long time coming, and I know the community at Henry Middle was very concerned when we pulled out, when we made, built the new Henry County Middle School, and they kept asking, what's going to become of Henry County Middle? Part of it's going to be the first Boys and Girls Club of Henry County. And it's very, very, it's been a long time coming, so I'm very happy to say that it will be at Henry County Middle School.
What an exciting night to all be together and celebrating and just really wrapping our arms around our community and our children. So thank you for your leadership and thank you for your partnership. It's a testament to how much our community cares about our children and how it truly takes a village and more to raise them and to just really pour into them. So thank you all, and I'm excited to move forward with this.
I just want to repeat what I stated earlier regarding the goals and mission of the Boys and Girls Club. They align with our goals as well, so I'm excited that we're all working together because it's for the betterment of this community and our children.
We all know that our children are our future, and I'm so grateful to have this great program in our community that will benefit our children for years to come, and I'm also grateful for the collaborative efforts of each of our governments, the county, the city, and the school board. It's just amazing what we can accomplish if we all come together, and it really is what makes our county such a great place to be, and I hope this is just the beginning of more things that we can do together.
I too would just like to echo my fellow board members and to say, you know, Henry County is welcoming, we're deserving, we're excited about it, and I too am really excited of how it came about from the three different municipalities with the commissioners, the McDonough City Council, and the Board of Education coming together to make this happen. I think it makes it a little bit sweeter that there's kind of three agencies that it took to make it happen. So with no further ado, I think we had a motion and we had a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. All right, it's approved. Woo! Woo-hoo! This time of year also brings the opportunity to share with our board, or our board to share with the community their priorities that they want to, you know, push out to our legislative delegation, those that represent us under the gold dome, and each year, the board adopts formally a list of legislative priorities, and this year, no different. They made that action official last night with a nice list that they, you know, hope our delegation to the State General Assembly can accomplish in their efforts, you know, during this upcoming 2020 legislative season.
Yeah, our board has really been seen as really a voice of leadership across the state in the area of legislative development, and this upcoming legislative season is anticipated to be no other. And their legislative priorities are each aligned with their core beliefs and commitments, and we welcome you to take a look at the legislative priorities and join us in working collaboratively with our legislators. collaboratively with our legislators.
We also had just one of our routine community use of school facilities that we took action on, but one of the biggest celebrations of the night is going to be something that will carry on into the next month. The board had the opportunity to make this official with a nice proclamation on a Celebrate Learning Day in Henry County Schools.
That's right. The Board of Education really felt strongly that this needed to be a moment where we celebrated our schools, our students, our employees, our teachers, our support personnel, our school leaders, our principals, and our families by declaring December 9th a day to celebrate learning in Henry County Schools. So we welcome you to join the celebration. They signed and approved a proclamation to declare this day a day to celebrate, and it is an invitation across this great county to be a part of celebrating the wonderful things happening in Henry County Schools.
Stay tuned, December 9th, Celebrate Learning Day in Henry County Schools. All across, not just Henry County Schools, we're making this thing countywide. So stay tuned to find out more information about that. After that, of course, that was a part of the business session, but you know, our business session really is always kicked off with a nice one, welcome from our board chair. You were able to add to that this time around, share a little bit with our audience about the CCRPI, but also there's some special days that we recognize this month.
That's right. It really is a season to be thankful with our Thanksgiving season just on the horizon and a moment to reflect on just how much goodness we have as we share in this work together. It's also Kindness Week here in Henry County Schools, and Kindness Week is an opportunity for each of our young people and each of our employees to think about these random acts of kindness that you can do just each and every day, and so we have a real celebration of kindness here in Henry County this very week. And it is also School Psychologists Appreciation Month. And I'll tell you what, we have just the most remarkable cadre of school psychologists one could ever ask for. They do incredible work, we're thankful for them, and we hope that you spend a moment saying thank you to them as well.
So we also had the opportunity to recognize our Teachers of the Year, the semifinalists, the top six out of this past year's class. We brought them up one last time and had the opportunity to reflect on the Teacher of the Year Gala where Janay Cohen was announced as the 2019-2020 Teacher of the Year for Henry County Schools. She's from Red Oak Elementary, her principal, Dr. Shakira Agbar, they were on hand as well. It really was another celebratory event. The theme for the night was celebrating just students and teachers, and that was...
Well, you know, while we were celebrating, we also had a chance to celebrate this great communications team that we have, and J.D. Harden, along with David Birch and Rodney Christopher, were recognized by the state organization for their exceptional results in PR and branding for this organization. They received 10 awards, most of them were gold-level awards, and really have just demonstrated across this great state that they are the best in the business, and probably partly because of this great board recap we have each month.
We did receive a gold award for this particular broadcast and this project that we work on, but we do this really to make sure that you're as informed as possible, as much a part of our school system as you possibly can be, and it starts with great communication, top to bottom, and we thank you guys for listening and watching. So that was only, we appreciate that recognition, but we also had the opportunity to recognize the three-time back-to-back-to-back state champion Locust Grove softball team. They were, we told them they have a standing invitation as many years as they want to come back. We also recognize our REACH Scholars. Our REACH Scholars are middle school students who are going to be the recipients of a $10,000 scholarship right now that will be ready for them whenever they take on the opportunity to go to college.
Yeah, and this is our first year Henry County Schools has participated in the REACH Scholarship Program, and so it was actually so inspiring to hear the dreams and ambitions of our young middle schoolers who already have their eyes set on college, just really reiterating that Henry County Schools is the best possible place for a kid to learn.
Also had a couple of students who were recognized for being a part of the superintendent's, you know, advisory group with the state school superintendent, Richard Woods, so congratulations to those two young outstanding students. And then we, again, we recognize the Teachers of the Year, but before that, we had inspiration from our Oakland Elementary Chorus, I believe, you know, that group was able to provide a nice little introduction to the meeting.
Yeah, what we love most about starting our business meeting is that we start with students at the center, exactly where they should be. And our Oakland Elementary School Chorus just had a beautiful musical selection that they performed, and we thank Principal Mr. Tyrone Grant and the fine arts staff at Oakland Elementary School for students who did just a wonderful job to set the tone for the evening together.
Tori Gray was the conductor of that group, and I mean, they were on point, they did a great job, and everybody was giving them a grand round of applause for their performance that night. You know, moving throughout the rest of the evening, we also had, you know, a unanimous consent agenda that was approved, and one of those last things that they did approve separately, new personnel members joining our district, so.
It's always my favorite time of the night when I get to welcome new members to our leadership team, and last night was no different. We were able to welcome Mr. Andy Pike, our new principal at Mount Carmel Elementary School, and also able to recognize several assistant principals who had been either appointed at our special call meeting two weeks ago or last night. And so we welcome those assistant principals and are thankful for them joining our team.
And we're thankful for you, as always, joining us here on our monthly board recap. We couldn't do this without, you know, viewers like yourself, and we hope that you'll come back many more months after this to find out all the wonderful things that your Board of Education is doing on behalf of you and all citizens, and most importantly, the students here in Henry County Schools. So thank you once again. We wish you the happiest of Thanksgivings and a restful break with your family and friends, and we look forward to seeing you next month. As is the case with most board meetings, there's a lot more information that you're able to witness being there in person or watching the full version on demand that we're unable to bring to you here in this very short board meeting recap. The links to those presentations and videos can be found in the description section directly below this video.